Oh merciful Creator, your hand is open wide to satisfy the needs of every living creature. Make us thankful for your loving providence and grant that we, remembering the account that we must one day give, may be faithful stewards of your good gifts. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Present.
District three Commissioner Starkey, here. District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Here.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Here. I think I just heard Gary's with us. Okay. So we have a forum. Now's the time for public comment. Citizens are given an opportunity to comment on any current or future agenda item coming before the board, on other business or the board's purview. Today's public comment will be handled as follows. First, we will take comment from people that are in person here today. Then we will take public comment from those who are pre-registered for a WebEx link and currently on cue. We request that those that address the board, their comments are not directed personally toward any commissioner or team member, but rather direct to the issues. This provides mutual respect between board members and the public. After stating your name and address for the clerk, three-minute timer will be started. After two minutes, a single beep will indicate you have one minute left. When your time is up, two beeps will sound and you should finish your comments. WebEx participants will be disconnected automatically after they finish their comment, or their three minutes is up. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, sir. We have two for in-person. So Randy Shane is the first one, followed by Nancy Hazelwood. So Mr. Shane.
State your name and address for the clerk.
Good morning. My name's Randy Shane. I'm at 9021 Wire Road, Zephyr Hills, Florida. Good morning Commissioners, Chairman, and other Commissioners. This is kind of a follow-up from my email on 215 about the spray jet paver data that we collected from Bruce B. Downs. I don't know, can I?
Move for receipt and file.
Aye.
What's that?
Motion second. All those, all those.
Paver.
And, 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 I have this roll call.
All right. District two Commissioner Waitman. District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed.
Okay. Yeah, it's just my follow-up email. The data that we collected from Bruce B. Downs for the spray jet paver is outstanding. Each of you have a copy of it. It's basically the spray jet paver versus traditional paving, and the bond strength is just almost double. Using an analogy, I don't know about the, how many people remember the old bag phones, the old bag cell phones? I'm sure we all used them back in the day. But that's kind of like, the old bag phone is like those conventional paver, and the new iPhone 15 is like the spray jet paver. That's what we're talking about, the difference here. And just, I don't, I want to use all my time, but out here on Meridian Avenue, we do work for Dade City as well. And we, I got with them about six months or eight months ago. And Meridian, heading eastbound from the courthouse, just past City Hall, I asked them if that was their road. It's got a bunch of slippage on it. And on your way out today, drive down that road. That's what conventional paving does. I don't know when that was done, but they told me that was a county road, Meridian. So then I'm just going by what they said. I don't know for a fact that it's a county road, but that'll give you an idea of that slippage that you get from conventional paving.
When you, when you say slippage, what does that mean?
What's that?
Slippage. I don't know what you mean. I know what it is to slip.
Uh, slippage, yeah. It's where the, it's basically when you mill an overlay, or if you just overlay, and you, you don't get that bond. That's what we're talking about this report. The, the bond to the old pavement is almost double with the spray jet paver versus conventional paving. But if you look down through there, you'll see it. It's, it's almost like, it's not rippled, but the asphalt, the old asphalt is just sliding on top of the old asphalt.
The new asphalt sliding on top of the old?
Yeah, the new asphalt sliding on top of the new, I mean, the old. So you can see the spots down through there. I took some pictures, but I don't have those, you know, they're on my iPhone. But you can, you can see it plain as day on that eastbound lane. And that's, that's the difference. That's the biggest difference between the spray jet paver and conventional paving. That's why we're really pushing this spray jet paver with the county, and not just the county, but the state. We're looking at doing Little Road. That's the next road we have. We'd love to use spray jet paver there. And the state is going to be coming out to that as well. We've got their attention with this report as well. So. There's any other questions?
No, there's no questions. This is public comment.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right. Ms. Hazelwood?
Name and address.
Really? You gotta tell me? Nancy Hazelwood, 34110. A nice place, Dade City, Florida. I'm here to vouch for you all about the Brooksville Ridge again. I went by Ramsey Road in St. Joe, and the whole place is just down 25 feet. And then you look across to St. Joe Road, so you've got on both sides of St. Joe Road, and you've got another one being taken down. I thought they were only going to stay in one section, but they've carried that all the way to, I don't know, that road that, with Likuji electrics on. So you've got two there. I am concerned about it happening all over the northeast rural area. It's called the Brooksville Ridge. It is a high recharge water area. Y'all are starting to have water problems. You need all your water. Taking down these hills and then plastering them with asphalt streets and rooftops are not, is not going to help the situation at all. So I am hoping you will enact some type of changes so that those hills are protected and no longer allowed to be taken down in that area. They are rare in Florida also. So if y'all would please hear my plea, thank y'all.
Thank you. Is anyone in the audience wish to speak in public comment this morning that did not sign up? See, no one. We have anybody on WebEx?
Yes, sir, we do. The first individual signed up on WebEx is Ms. Angel Cook. Ms. Cook, are you there? Ms. Cook, are you there? If you are, you are muted.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioner. My name is Angel Cook, 6145 Jefferson.
Jefferson Street, New Port Ritchie, 34652. I'm here on behalf of the Rotary Club of Holiday. I'm a past president of the Rotary Club of Holiday, and for five years have served as a chairperson for both the Holiday Street Parade and the Chasco Fiesta Street Parade. Both parades attract thousands of spectators and follow the same route, which is just under three miles. The greatest challenge that we face with both parades is maintaining public safety. To safely cover the parade route requires 2,400 barricades. A few years ago, Pasco County dispersed to the three municipalities the barricades that they had stored and managed. Those barricades are shared throughout the county for various large events. Over time, a portion of the barricades have been discarded due to damage. Currently, New Port Ritchie has 950, Dade City has 189, and Zephyr Hills has 222 barricades. For both parades, we borrow from Dade City and Zephyr Hills, leaving us still short over 1,000 barricades, requiring us to call other cities to borrow theirs. In the past, we have borrowed Dunedin and the city of Tampa. When we borrow barricades from those cities, our Rotary Club must solicit volunteers who are willing to use their personal or business vehicles and trailers, along with giving up a couple of days' work to get them. Those volunteers drive to those cities to get the barricades and physically load them and transport them to New Port Ritchie. Then after the parade, volunteers must transport them back to the city we borrowed them from and unload them. The liability alone with the chance of an auto accident during transport, or a volunteer being injured while lifting that many barricades, is reason enough for me to ask for help in getting barricades that we need to New Port Ritchie. Once we add in almost three miles of parade route, where spectators are lining the streets for the floats, the risk is extremely high of an injury occurring. We need these additional 1,400 barricades to keep the guests from approaching the floats and prevent the risk of someone getting hit because the float operator is not able to see them. Residents from not only Pasco County, but the surrounding counties come to these parades. It is our duty to make them as safe as possible. I would like the Board of County Commissioners' help in securing the purchase of these much-needed barricades to continue this 45-year tradition of these community parades. I appreciate your time and consideration on behalf of the Rotary Club of Holiday.
Thank you.
All right. The next individual signed up is Nicholas Mans. Mr. Mans, are you there? Mr. Mans, if you are there, you are muted.
I'm muted.
Okay. I can hear you now. So name and address for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Yeah. So my name is Nicholas Mans. My address is 4863 Welbrook Drive, New Port Ritchie, Florida, 34653. So good morning Commissioners. My name is, like I said, Nicholas Mans. I'm also here representing the Rotary Club of Holiday. And as Angel stated, he is the past, past president of the club. I'm the current president of the Rotary Club. And just to piggyback on her comments, just a little bit, the public safety issue is first and foremost our top concern, both for our club as well as the city of New Port Ritchie. But the Rotary Club of Holiday, the Chasco Steering Committee, they take this every time we put on both of these parades. And just to provide a little background, in mid-2000, the county used tourism dollars to buy barricades. But year after year, the crowds keep getting bigger, and the parades keep getting more popular. So as those parades grow bigger and the crowd grows bigger, so does the need for the barricades. And as Angel said, as volunteers, we try to get them from the various cities, but the overwhelming time and manpower is an asset to us, and the availability is inconsistent. So, I mean, the bottom line is today's parades are unsafe. So we're asking the County Commissioners to fund the purchase of barricades to protect the citizens and our ability to continue the parade tradition that the city of New Port Ritchie and the Pasco County residents have been doing.
Is that it?
That is it.
Yeah, that is it.
Are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Now we move on to, we have time certands on our resolutions, so we'll move, and it's 10:15 now, our time certain for resolution is 10:45. So we'll move on into consent items, the consent agenda. I have items C-15 withdrawn, C-17 pull and revise, C-26 withdrawn, C-36 withdrawn, C-37 withdrawn.
That's all on my list. I don't know if the board has any.
Okay. Does anybody on the board wish to pull any other items?
Seeing none, move approval to remaining consent agenda.
Aye.
Got a motion second by roll call vote.
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0. We'll move on to the pulled items. C-15, of course, withdrawn, C-17 pulled and revised. Yes, sir.
Good morning Chairman and Board. There's two parts to this pull and revise. The first one.
Mr. Anderson.
Name and department.
Name and department for the record.
Doug Anderson, Assistant Director, Pasco County Facilities Management.
Thank you.
Okay.
There were two errors. The first one was, there was a scrivener's error in the subject of the actual agenda memo. Changing Project Group C was revised to Project Group D. And also on the second page of the memo, Group C was revised to Group D. The second, the second pull and revise was page 38 of Exhibit A, and Civic Clerk was showing track changes. So these changes were applied to the original signed document and signed. So we were replacing that with pages 38, 39, 40, and 41 of the, of the agreement.
Move and pull with a noted changes.
Aye.
Got a motion second by roll call vote.
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
And Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could, hey Doug, I want to say your team did a phenomenal job when we brought this item up and we had the discussion with it. So greatly appreciate you guys working with the plus of the board. I think you did a fantastic job with it.
Thanks, Commissioner. Thank you very much. I'll pass on the team.
Okay. All that's left on the seat is C-26 was withdrawn, C-36 withdrawn, and C-37 withdrawn. So that completes the consent agenda. This is very unusual meeting. Still have plenty of time, so. Yes, sir.
I think the people from I-47 are here, so we could actually do that one.
Are they ready? Okay. Come forward.
Good morning. David Engel, Planning and Economic Growth Director. I'm happy here today, happy to be here today because we are presenting an expansion project of an existing business called Global ETS. They are a leading testing lab for electronics equipment, and they're situated in the West Pasco Industrial Park. Can you just cue the slides up, please? Thank you. Again, the project's located in the west side of Pasco County at the West Pasco Industrial Park on Success Drive, right off of State Road 54. The project has been situated there for a number of years, and it's had a number of expansions. The project is a qualified target industry, is certified by the Pasco Economic Development Council. The business is proposing a $3 million capital renovation of an 8,000-square-foot facility. They are going to create 32 new full-time jobs, and their contribution to the gross county product annually will be $6.1 million once the folks are hired and the facility is completed. This is a job creation incentive pursuant to our job creation ordinance. There's a maximum of $160,000 in cap for this incentive, and the average wage is projected at $95,548. And every year, for every dollar of the incentive, they'll return $37 to the county in economic benefit. So the Planning and Economic Growth Department recommends approval of this incentive. But prior to taking a vote, I'd like to introduce Turner Arbor. He's the Economic Development, Senior Economic Development Manager for the Pasco Economic Development Council. Thank you.
Okay.
Good morning Commissioners.
Yes, sir.
It's a great day in Pasco County.
Yes, sir.
I'm thrilled to be here today to celebrate the growth and to shine a spotlight on Global Electronics Testing Services, better known as GETS, a member of our business community since 2012. With their recent expansion, they're poised to create 32 new high-skill, high-wage jobs, each with a focus on high-tech innovation and international impact. GETS is somewhat unique in Pasco, as they're a defense contractor with a global footprint that is headquartered right here in Odessa. Today, they operate across five locations worldwide, including strategic hubs in Asia, Europe, and North America. And they exemplify excellence in international collaboration and technological advancement. As leaders in independent electrical component authentication and testing services, GETS sets the standard for innovation in their industry. Their cutting-edge technology and advanced testing methodologies have been developed in part through a partnership with the University of South Florida, and have enabled them to grow into a global leader in defense technology. By choosing Pasco County as a site for their expansion, they're not only investing in our community, but also helping to reinforce Pasco as, our reputation as a hub for defense and high-tech innovation. And we are excited to see their community's success. And with that, I'd like to invite up Dan Tang, President and CEO of GETS, and say a few words.
Yes, sir. Well, thank you. Thank you. I'm deeply grateful for the consideration. Thank you for the Pasco EDC and the Board, the Board members. Global ETS actually wouldn't be here without you, the help of the Pasco community. I really appreciate that. As a citizen of Pasco, been here since 2006, when the road was not fully built. Do you see where they are right now? It's amazing from me here. Super excited. I'm a long time here, and I'll go to continue to expand further. And this is just the beginning. And you're going to see us that right now. We have some major projects in-house that bring technology, AI technologies, to the Pasco County, and really put us on the map as far as what we develop internally with the patent technologies that we have here. So I really, really appreciate the support of everyone here in the Pasco community, and I cannot thank you enough. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Can we get your name for the record?
I'm sorry. My name is Dan Tang. I'm the owner of Global ETS at Lulsee.
Thank you, Mr. Tang.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman. Wait, Dan. Dan. I'm just so excited to see you here, and we've been friends for a while. So, and to watch your company just explode is so exciting. Can you talk a little bit about, a little bit more about what you do and your expansion over the last few years?
Absolutely. So we're a specialized electronic, counterfeit electronic components. So in this world, counterfeit electronic, it's make up around $200 billion worth globally. So pretty much anytime any aerospace defense company using electronic components that is not certified or has been purchased through a traceable source, will go through us. Global ETS is an independent, third-party test lab. We authenticate to ensure the device is integrity, it meets the standard, and that it is no counterfeit. is integrity, it's meet the standard, and that it is no counterfeit going to our system. Our government actually here have a lot of issues where we have counterfeit product escape that go into the submarine, jet fighter, so a lot of the concern that people may not be aware is a lot of these electronic components is very high-tech and they're very complex. Lots of time you can't tell until you put it in a system, and once in the system and you activate the chip, and the chip can fail at any temperature range, especially if it's on an aircraft, aircraft up in the air, minus sixty-five degrees Celsius, the chip does not perform what it's supposed to be doing, result catastrophic, there's life risk. So our job here to ensure the integrity of components that goes into pretty much everything, from the aerospace industry to automotive, you name it, you got it, because electronic is the number four most traded commodity in the world. And I know the, with our government here, we're trying to protect our technologies here, and it's one of the reasons why you know that United States is passing the bills to expand and bring the fab, manufacture back to the United States here, so this is very critical, where we are is very critical in, in the application.
And where the, the piece of property where he's expanding to, you all will know, because it is the property next to that frat house, right?
Yeah, so, no, that's, it's near, it's in the near frat house, but it's in the back end, but.
Oh, you didn't get that property? I thought you were going to.
I'm in the process of working out to, to obtain that property for future growth.
Oh, maybe I wasn't supposed to say anything.
That's a project that works, like I say, we're, we're already just expanded this year, and we're already talking about expand further with a new project called Blue Opti View, so I'm very excited in the next couple of years to introduce that project as we continue to grow.
And Dan is a part of my international CEO group that I take around the Tampa Bay area and look at assets and fun things, and I think you enjoy it, so.
Thank you.
Little camaraderie with the other, other guys, so. I'm just so excited to watch your success and that you're going to be here. One, one last question, what kind of job skills will this create? Are you looking for engineers, you're looking for, what kind of folks are you looking for? Just so people are hearing this.
Excellent, excellent questions. Actually, our job requires very highly skilled technical master degree, including even PhD electrical engineer, not only majority of our team are electrical engineers, but only that, we also have master degree chemical engineers as well as mechanical engineers as we are designing some of the product that we, we have patented in-house as well. So collaborating with University of South Florida was, is a big, big help, and that's majority of our talent has come from the graduate from USF.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we thank you for, you've been here a long time, so you've been helping us grow and grow, until we reached in that point where we're premier county, and thank you and your team for, for being here and doing what you do for Pasco County, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, appreciate everyone.
And I've got a grandson that's a chemical engineer, I'll have him call you.
Yeah, I'd just like to say congratulations, keep up the great work, it's been fun watching you grow.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I feel the sentiments of my fellow commissioners and exciting to hear, hear you guys growing and expanding your footprint, and appreciate all you bring to our county, so thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah. So do we need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
All right, you got a motion, second by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed four one, so. Four zero. Second.
Commissioner Mariano.
Okay. All right, if you will.
You said four one, wait, you said it passed four one?
Four zero.
Four zero, okay.
We just had one, not a no vote, so, I'm sure he's for you, but he had to step away. So if you will, join me down front, we'll have the picture. Okay, that was forty, sir.
Forty-eight is standing in front of us.
And forty-eight's in front of us?
Yes. Good morning, good morning Commissioners, Bradford Atumua Assistant County Administrator, Public Infrastructure Branch. I'm pleased today to recommend the appointment of Mr. Kevin Plisca as our next Solid Waste Director. Kevin went through our rather rigorous interview process with other well-qualified candidates and made it. Kevin is a professional with more than twenty-five years of management and technical experience. He's a leader with philosophies and practices consistent with Pasco core values. He fully understands what people, performance, purpose and performance mean. I have no doubt he would be an excellent addition to the Pasco team. I will now ask Kevin to step forward to say some few words.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Chairman Oakley, Commissioners, my name is Kevin Plisca. I have had the very fortunate experience of being involved in Pasco County Solid Waste for over thirty years. I've done that on the private sector, and actually my involvement began when I was an intern at the University of Florida. I have a lot of experience and, but my most notable experiences really occurred at Pasco County of advancement of leadership, driving people, driving innovation, so I'm very fortunate, and I've always felt very close to, to Pasco County. So when this opportunity came up for the Solid Waste Director position, I did not believe I could pass it up. I'm very much aligned with the vision of the community, of the Commissioners, I think going back to even the mid-eighties, the, the vision that the Commissioners had on solid waste and how that truly drives sustainability and protection of natural resources, that's what drives me today, the continued vision of this community and the Commissioners, and how I can work with a very solid team that's in place today to continue to drive innovation and protect the natural resources that we have. I really appreciate the opportunity, I do appreciate the team that's in place, I think it's a great team, and as Bradford said, I think your interview and vetting process for, you know, interviewing people is extremely robust, and I certainly appreciate it, so thank you.
I spoke to a gentleman that's known you for quite a while, was John Powers, last night, he said you were the man, so. I know that you can do the job, so he said you've got all the information and education and all to help us move forward, so.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Thanks, Chairman, yeah, congrats on the, on the new post, and not to be remiss, but John Batista bet there for holding, holding, holding down the fort until you came along, so, John, good job, and appreciate all, all the work the Solid Waste folks do for our county.
Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Kevin, you've got a very impressive resume and probably more impressive work history, so I'd have you back on the team and, and especially in a big league role, so.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Starkey?
I'm just welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Great to have you. I'm looking for a motion.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion second by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed four zero, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir, welcome aboard. Well, bring him, come on back, we're going to take a picture. Remember this day.
Okay, we'll take a little slower, I guess.
What am? So that was forty-eight.
Yes, sir. Forty-nine?
Forty-nine.
Forty-nine, ready? R-49? Okay.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
J.J. Murphy, I, I remember standing up here about sixty months ago doing my interdiction, so it's good to be in front of you again. What I know now, I didn't know then, certainly about correctional facilities and inmate healthcare and all those things. What I will tell you is I stand here proud, side by side with the chief. We went through an extensive process with purchasing, we had a committee to get to where we are today, the chief will walk you through a presentation, but I really believe that this investment, moving forward, will save money because of some of your leadership and some of your actions in term, on the federal level. We're in this fight, we went to Washington to work on the insurance issue, so inmate healthcare doesn't end today, it starts today, and I think if we move forward, we'll start with a good partner. So with that, chief, do your thing.
Appreciate it. Good morning, Stacy Jenkins, Chief of Corrections, representing Corrections Department in Public Safety. I'm here today to request approval from the board to grant an award, a bid for inmate medical, mental health, and pharmaceutical services to NAF Care Incorporated for initial term of five years with one additional five-year renewal. As this board is aware, prior to assuming the correction facility operations in October of 2022, you accepted and extended multiple vendor contracts with an intent of evaluating the services and providers over the first year of operation. In June of 2023, Pasco County solicited an invitation to negotiate for inmate healthcare services, and we, we received seven proposals from seven different correctional healthcare providers. The seven providers' written responses were evaluated by an evaluation committee who further reduced the vendor list to four for oral presentation, and then selected two vendors which we negotiated with. Negotiation considerations included onsite and off-site care for the inmates, vendor experience, providing healthcare within a large correctional facility, experience within Florida, litigation, financial standing, and added value services. NAF Care has a proven record and experience of proactive, and a proactive care model, and they provided us the confidence that we believe that they can operate our medical treatment for our inmates. NAF Care provided staffing and price considerations for our current population, up to approximately seventeen hundred inmates, and for the expansion that is going to eventually house two thousand and fifty inmates. They also offered a per diem rate, so if we fall below that seventeen hundred number or above certain thresholds, we will either pay into or be credited for those populations. NAF Care costs presented to the board includes projected off-site cost at two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, with a shared cost for off-site or specialty care between that two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars up to two million seven hundred and fifty thousand. Anything over that two hundred, or two million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost would be a full responsibility of the county. So I'm requesting board approval, this is the breakdown of funding for this particular contract, and I'm requesting approval for a five-year term at a not-to-exceed value of eighty-one million five hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-eight cents. I'm available for any questions or concerns, and we do have representatives from NAF here in the audience.
Any questions from the board?
I'd just say ouch. And, you know, we're continuing to work on help with this, just so everyone knows. One, when we were in Tallahassee, we talked to our legislators about getting the ability to cap the cost the same way the state does, with, right now, it's different for them versus us, which makes no sense, and I, I think that if we worked that a little better and earlier, I think there was a lot, there may be support for that, one. And two, at the federal level, we continue to talk with our congressional delegation and others about the, what I think is a mistake maybe, with the Social Security Act, where if you get arrested and you go to, go to jail, you immediately lose your federal health benefits. And you can spend quite amount of time in there, and then you're found not guilty, and you come out and you've got no benefits and you have to reapply. And, and the county taxpayers have to pick up that liability, and it makes no sense. So we continue to try and change that at the federal level as well. So maybe we'll, you know, if we are successful and this comes down, will this, is this a fixed cost or is this projected? What if, what if we're successful? That is the question.
This is a full healthcare and a presumption that we continue as normal. I am sure that the selected vendor will work with us if we see reductions in cost.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions?
Mr.? Yeah, I would like to make sure that we're going to have that flexibility, so if that's not in the contract, let's take a close look at it, the county attorneys look at it.
Someone's coming up to the podium, maybe.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Morning Commissioners, my name's Kenny Davis, I'm a senior vice president with NAF Care. If you achieve what you're talking about as a partner moving forward in this venture, we will certainly look at those things and the savings that you can find through those federal or state programs, we're absolutely going to redo this with those in mind, we're, we all benefit from that, we're all citizens of some county somewhere, and that's a benefit to everybody.
Maybe you come to Washington with us. You could talk about the, the horror of the cost.
I'll stay in Hillsborough.
All right.
Move approval?
Second.
Got a motion second by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Go ahead.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye, motion passed four zero, thank you. Aye. Motion passed four zero. Thank you. Now, time's certain. It is ten forty-five, so we'll have RS one.
Okay, so is anyone here for World Down Syndrome Day? If so, please come to the podium. Bring your group. Okay, I'm gonna read the resolution. "A resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, declaring March twenty-one, 2024, as World Down Syndrome Day in Pasco County. Resolution number twenty-four dash zero seven seven. Whereas, World Down Syndrome Day is a global awareness day that has been officially observed by the United Nations since 2012 and advocates for the rights, inclusion, and well-being of people with Down Syndrome. And whereas, Down Syndrome occurs when an individual has an extra partial or whole copy of chromosome twenty-one, and it is not yet known why this syndrome occurs or what causes it. And whereas, individuals with Down Syndrome can achieve optimal quality of life through parental care and support, medical guidance, adequate access to healthcare, early intervention programs, inclusive education, and community-based support systems facilitating their participation in mainstream society and the fulfillment of their personal potential. And whereas, World Down Syndrome Day is held on the twenty-first day of the third month to signify the uniqueness of the triplication, trisomy, of the twenty-first chromosome that causes Down Syndrome. And whereas, World Down Syndrome Day's goal is to educate the community about the myths surrounding Down Syndrome and to stop the stereotyping of individuals with Down Syndrome. And whereas, around one in every eight hundred babies will be born with Down Syndrome in the United States, and about five thousand one hundred babies with Down Syndrome are born in the United States each year, making Down Syndrome the most common chromosomal condition. And whereas, individuals with Down Syndrome have an inherent right to be accepted and included as valued and equal members of the community. And whereas, the theme for this year's World Down Syndrome Day is End the Stereotypes, which emphasizes that stereotypes can stop people with Down Syndrome from being treated like other people, and that each person with Down Syndrome is different, just like everyone else. And whereas, on March twenty-one, 2024, Pasco County can create a voice for people with Down Syndrome by illuminating landmarks in blue and yellow to commemorate World Down Syndrome Day. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, that said board hereby declares March twenty-one, 2024, as World Down Syndrome Day in Pasco County, and encourages the illumination of landmarks in blue and yellow from dusk to dawn. Done and resolved in regular session with a quorum present and voting this twelfth day of March, 2024."
Motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion in second by roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Welcome. Do you have something you'd like to present to us here?
Yes, we do. Thank you so very much. Respected Commissioners, I appreciate the chance to address you today. I'm Ashley, and I'm joined with my four-year-old son. Tell me your name. What's your name?
Brody.
No, what's your name?
Brody.
Brody. And partnering with my good friend Becca here. She's also a vice president of our local nonprofit Down Syndrome organization called Friends. I'm the president and executive director. But we serve families in Hillsborough, Pinellas, and now we recently add Pasco County as well. So we're expanding, and we love it. But we offer essential special needs information, education, and resources to expectant in new families. We also do fun activities in a safe and inclusive environment. But we wanna thank you especially Councilwoman Waitman for sponsoring us for today, and we thank you all for passing for March twenty-first to be recognized as World Down Syndrome Day in Pasco County. My brother-in-law taught him that.
Thank you, brother-in-law.
He asked me to talk about that. I'll say Uncle Chris. World Down Syndrome Day, as Ms. Alvarez was saying, that it was put on in 2012, the whole world recognizes March twenty-first as World Down Syndrome Day. So all over the world, monuments and structures all over will light up blue and yellow, the awareness colors for Down Syndrome. And it promotes inclusion and awareness, like the theme and stereotypes this year, to end the stereotypes that, you know, people with Down Syndrome, you know, can't hold jobs, can't, can't be included in regular school classes, and all that's not true. And you'll see if you watch ABC Action News, actually, on World Down Syndrome Day, we're gonna be interviewed about all that as well. And I'll hand it over to Becca here, so she can talk as well.
Thank you. Take your place.
Yeah, she wants to talk.
Good morning. My name's Rebecca Rocco. I'm a resident, like my family, it's a resident of West Pasco County. I've lived here for nearly four years. I'm a wife, I'm a mother to three beautiful children, and I'm also a critical parent nurse. Our daughter Lindy is eight, and she really wanted to be here today, but she's in school right now in Pasco County. So Lindy, she's the biggest best sister to our twin boys, Kayden and Cooper. And I do also want to thank you for allowing me to just share a minute of why World Down Syndrome Day means so much to me and my family. On July fifth, 2021, at just twenty-eight weeks, we welcomed our twin boys into the world. And our Cooper here in the front was the one in seven hundred babies born each year with a third copy of our, of the twenty-first chromosome, which is also known as trisomy twenty-one or Down Syndrome. This year will be our third year celebrating World Down Syndrome Day, and we are so excited about this. We encourage all of our friends and families to celebrate with us by wearing mismatched socks or wearing something blue and yellow, which is the colors of Down Syndrome awareness. World Down Syndrome Day, which is held on March twenty-first, is a global awareness day, like we talked about, which has been observed by the United Nations since 2012. Our family loves celebrating World Down Syndrome Day. My daughter saves her casual pass for this day from last year every day so she can dress in blue and yellow and support her brother. And like we talked about, World Down Syndrome Day, we're calling for people around the world to end the stereotypes. A stereotype is a set of ideas that people have about when someone, about something or someone is like. Stereotypes can be positive, they can be negative or neutral, but once formed, a stereotype can be difficult to change. Stereotypes about Down Syndrome and those who have it can cause unwarranted fear for new parents and families, the little ones born with Down Syndrome. I personally felt that fear, and I experienced despair as I sobbed for hours when learning of this diagnosis. I felt that our lives were over, and we would be terminally overburdened, and that we would have no future as a family, all because of an extra microscopic entity, the most common chromosomal anomaly in humans, trisomy twenty-one, Down Syndrome. Stereotypes are hurtful. For people with Down Syndrome and intellectual disabilities, stereotypes can stop them from being treated like other people. They are often treated like children. They are often underestimated and often excluded. Having Down Syndrome or an intellectual disability is only one small part of a person. There are many awesome things we can learn by observing those with Down Syndrome. This World Down Syndrome Day, our family is asking you, our community and commissioners, to join with us and the rest of the world by declaring and recognizing March twenty-first as World Down Syndrome Day in Pasco County. We are also calling on the board to please consider lining up a landmark in our county in blue and yellow to show support for all those with Down Syndrome. World Down Syndrome Day is so important to me and my family, and we want to do our part to help remove the stereotypes surrounding Down Syndrome as well as update a sometimes archaic public opinion as to what Down Syndrome is and to what to expect from people who have it. Thank you again, Commissioners and Council, for your time and your consideration for approving. We really, really appreciate it very much.
I also have our brochures and cards if you guys want to look at it as well.
Um, to receive and file?
Second. Roll call vote?
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Well, thank you for, for coming today and making us aware of this day. So I'm not sure if we knew about this day before, to be honest with you.
It's not well-known in the world.
Right.
Thank you so much.
So y'all have a facility you go to or anything, or just through families, contact of families is how you do?
It's just word of mouth. We have a, a very big walk that we do, the Buddy Walk, every year in October. October is actually Down Syndrome Awareness Month for the world, so we actually have a big walk. It's our biggest fundraiser. So it's just word of mouth and people hearing about us, and we have a website, but we're trying to get the word out, so.
We, we do big celebrations with the organization. We're actually having a World Down Syndrome Day event on the twenty-third at Tampa.
Where are you doing?
We all be celebrating.
We're celebrating something.
Yeah.
Oh, Zootempo.
Zootempo, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Ashley and Becca and Dad, what's your?
Oh, mine, yes. I'm sorry.
Both are. You seem a little busy. In my opinion, we're all parents and grandparents here. Our kids are our most precious gift, and it's an honor that you all reach out to us and educate us on the challenges and the blessings that you have when raising kids that have, you know, this situation. So, you know, anytime that you wanna share information with us, I think we'd all probably be open to hearing and, and learning more, and happy to love and support you all as you, as you go through life. So thank you for being here today.
We could, we could come back in October, because we actually spoke in front of Tampa City Council in October for Down Syndrome Awareness Month, so we would, we would love to come back.
You have anything to say?
I've just, God bless you.
Thank you.
Well.
Do you do walk in Pasco County yet?
No, we are, so it's just one central location where everybody from all the counties part to it. We had almost a thousand attendees last year.
Wow, good.
It keeps growing, growing every year, so.
I'm looking at your website.
Well, we'll all come down, and we'll make a picture and, and actually try to put it on media that media will know about March twenty-first now.
Thank you so much.
R forty-five?
Yeah, there we go. The eleven o'clock's R forty-five? Right on time. That was amazing here today. Our clock's not working, but.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can everybody hear me all right?
Yes.
Well, my name is Adi Javeda, and it's my pleasure to be here to recognize Pasco County today for your commitment to Commission Manager Form of Government. And I'm here on behalf of FCCMA, which stands for, for the City and County Management Association. And the award being presented today is actually by ICMA, which stands for International County and City Management Association. It's my distinct privilege to recognize you for your support and your commitment to actually providing guidance and support to your county manager, and I also would like to, to recognize your county manager for the exceptional service that he has provided to the community. And I also wanna share a quick fact. Back in 2009, there was a poll conducted to find out how many folks or citizens knew about, you know, the, the role of government leaders in shaping your communities, and it was found that only five percent of the citizens in the communities knew what that meant. So in 2015, FCCMA decided to, to take this baton and raise awareness about different communities and different counties about what it means to actually have a professional county manager and what, what he or she does for the local community. So I guess in a nutshell, what I wanted to highlight is that the reason for having a professional county manager is to basically separate the legislative duties from your administration oversight. Again, my privilege and honor here to, to be presenting you with this fifty-year anniversary for the Commissioner Manager Form of Government. So with your permission, I would like to present this to the Chair and the Commissioners and the County Manager. And I would ask everybody if you can recognize and maybe give them a round of applause for all of you.
Thank you. We'll go down, anyone wanna speak?
Mariano? Yeah, can I ask a question? So this past year, we had a legislation ramifications from the previous year's bill about Live Local. I'm wondering what type of role you guys took and how you, did you look at the issue at all?
I can actually get that information over to our appropriate personnel who deals with that stuff, and they can be in touch with you. That's not under my purview. I actually am part of the Professional Management Matters Committee. There's a separate legislative committee that deals with those things, and I'll be happy to, I guess, have a follow-up with that.
I recommend you make it a big issue for yourselves to study it, because with a group like yours to lead the way, city and county together, we started fighting the battle pretty much alone. A lot of others joined in, including cities, and I think the more support coming up, the better, because we still don't know what their full effect's gonna be this year, but we know we're gonna have to be ready for next year.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, we'll come down and take a picture, so.
I wanna thank everybody for this opportunity. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you. So we've covered everything, haven't we?
Let's get into business.
We can go to old business. We'll go to old business for now until the time gets right for the next one, which is at eleven-thirty?
Did any of you see your chair? If you want to talk it out?
Are you waiting for people in?
Yes.
Okay. We'll wait on them. All right. Seth, ordinary business?
Yes. So, Commissioner Starkey follows Florida Tax Watch pretty closely. And their 2023.
And look.
Report came out. There's a pile of information in here. And I was curious, since we're having more robust budget conversations, I guess quarterly now as we're going through, on page, was it twenty-four, twenty-three? Twenty-one?
That was forty-one.
Yeah, just go up.
Per capita total county revenue.
No, we want expenditures. Just down a couple pages from.
This is a really fascinating publication.
So, anyway, yeah, so Pasco, so when we were going through and we're looking at expenditures, Pasco's ranked 23 on expenditures. And we have a big old budget. And, you know, for me, I'm very measured on our, you know, the way we tax our park citizens and wants versus needs. So, obviously, seeing this, it just made me curious as to what are we doing in our expenditures that makes Pasco 23 of 67 counties? And there's other information in there. I think it'd be, if we can identify what's the driver to how it ranks Pasco, I think that'd be, create some fine dialogue as we go through our budget process. So, interesting report. I know Commissioner Starkey references Tax Watch quite often and just thought bring that to everybody's attention, that we're 22 and spending money. So, curious to see what all we're getting, paying for a buck out of that number. That's pretty much it for me today.
Okay. Ms. Starkey?
I'm busy looking at Florida Tax Watch's latest publication. All right, I have some photos. I was driving up 19 the other day and twice, my heart just dropped that we're still having businesses do this. And I just, I don't know how we, we've got to really pump up our education. So, this is, this is a place where I go to buy bait. I went there Saturday to get bait for my grandson to fish. And this is what they did to their trees. And it just, you know, I'm trying to clean up holiday and make it a much more attractive place for businesses and residents. And we're always getting slammed on, no one cares about holiday. And to watch a business do something like this is really frustrating. So, I know, I know this is not legal and our code enforcement is on this now, but it's going to take years for this to come back. And never mind that their hedge is just non-existent. Next picture. Oh, so here's what the Wind Dixie used to look like. And now they just chopped off the whole, all the top of it so you can see that billboard on someone else's property. This doesn't look nearly as bad from this view as when you're coming up 19. The same thing happened on Little Road. We caught the company that was cutting the trees down, so you could see the billboard. And they got fined tens of thousands of dollars for all the, our trees. They're on our public right away and they cut them down to see a billboard on private property. So, again, I don't know if it's education, just what it is, but we just have to find a way to let our businesses know it's not okay to be doing this.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Starkey?
Just to add, looking at that right there, though, this reminds me of when with Lakouchi from years ago, went through and the other utility as well, went through and cut around the power lines so they didn't grow oak to it. What we may want to look at, I think we did make some changes that you wouldn't put any more oak trees right underneath the power line.
Yeah, well, that's not the power line. The power line's up much higher. That is a, like a telephone line or something. It's not, it's not, this was not done for the power lines. It looks like that in this picture. This was done, so you could see that billboard. That's another reason why I hate billboards. Okay, uh, next picture. Okay, this is right across from the county building. We pass an ordinance on the feather banners. And I just want to remind our code officers that they're not, you're not allowed to have as many as you want. You're allowed one. And so, just want to just remind everyone that we did take care of that. It's just still prolific all around the county. Next, I want to talk about the Trinity pumps. And I brought this up a number of times. We have, we have these pumps on Little Road in front of, one's in front of Thousand Oaks and there's one on the other side, kind of by, I think it's Generations Church. It might be Pope United Methodist Church. I've asked for us to do something that looks nicer than having that pump, which is, you know, it's very unsightly along the side of the road. I want to suggest, someone said they want, well, they'll surround it with chain link fence. No, that's not, that's just as unsightly as the pump. So, can't we make something like these privacy screens that just give it a little more class than having a pump? Frankly, I worry about vandalism on a pump like that. So, I just think we could do better and we should do better. Okay. Well, I have two more things, three more things, sorry. I learned this weekend that once a month, the Angklo Lighthouse is open. It's on the first weekend of every month. It stops in May. I mean, May will be the last. They stop in the summer because it's too hot to climb the tower in the summer and it picks back up in the fall. But that's us on the top of the tower there. My husband, my grandson and Katie's boy and my daughter and another friend. Hundred twenty steps, but it's a beautiful view up there and it's just a great, a nice thing to go, to go see this lighthouse. Actually, 35 years ago, when it was all rusted out and steps were missing and we used to go up there and have picnics at the very top all the time. My husband and I got engaged about 100 yards from the bottom of that lighthouse. So, I actually am taking those CEOs on my next tour. That's one of our stops, our last stop, is to go visit the Angklo Lighthouse. Okay. Wanted to talk and remind everybody that we made a commitment to our citizens about buying up our private utilities. And there was a time when we had a plan and I don't know what that plan is anymore. We purchased two. We, what was the first one that we got? It was?
Jasmine Lakes, Old Terrace.
Okay, that one. Then the next one we got was Lindrick. We got help from the legislature and help from, with ARPA funds to buy that. I think the next one is Mat Hatter.
Yes, the Consolidated Systems.
Is Aloha. And I'm not saying we got to, you know, do it now. I'm just saying, what is our plan? Because I'm always out there talking to people and especially the Aloha people because that's a lot of my district, not water so bad. And the rates are so high that we just need to have an articulate a plan. Did you want to say something on that?
I was going to, I was going to say, as far as the order, as far as in which we took them, Aloha would be first of the next one.
No, I think it's the biggest one, so they said it would be last because it'll have the most impact.
Aloha, the Aloha system carries the most debt and would be the largest impact back to the county. So, you would want to probably tackle that one last just because of the complexities involved. The Consolidated System, the Mat Hatter System, it's actually a system that's experiencing growth and it would make sense to be your next acquisition target. Utilities is doing an efficiency study right now and they'll be handling rates for next year as well. That would be the time to really look at officially making, making a move on that system.
Yeah, I mean, those people suffered for a long time.
Yeah, well, that's why I want to make sure that we have a plan because all of a sudden, I don't think we have a plan. I had a meeting with citizens who live in, gosh, off of Seven Springs Boulevard, Nature's Hideaway and some of the communities in there. There's a charter school going in and they're concerned about the traffic. And we, so I was, you know, zooming in like I do on my iPad, the map around it and looking. And there is a wastewater or a water treatment facility that is Aloha's right behind there. And so, I asked our Utilities Department, what would the law, you know, when we buy Aloha, what are we going to do with those, their old facilities? They said, well, we'd probably close it down. So, there's another funding source. And I just wonder, when we bought Lindrick, was there any property that came with it? And can we, can we put it out there on the market and use that money to help go towards the next one? And how many properties does Aloha have maybe around? So, you know, maybe there's, I know that's going to be small, but we should at least look at that as part of the funding opportunity. But I feel like we need to have a plan on buying these guys out. Lastly, I wanted to talk to you about the Angklo River Park and I want to send this letter down to you guys. We sent this out in December. And, you know, we've had citizens come here and talk to us about their fears of change at the park. So, and I get it and I understand it. And we haven't been able to discuss it because we've been going through some revisions to the plan and some clarification of what I think the county and what we all may want to see out there versus what was submitted. So, this is a letter that went out to Mr. Overton and it states in here that it's really our intention to have a much more thoughtfully designed and sized restaurant than what was presented to us. And, you know, the Angklo River Park is a jewel and I, we used to go there for soccer picnics when my older kids were young. Now, we did, we used to rent it from Duke, but a number of years ago, we bought it. We bought it from Duke plus the other part that we weren't utilizing and they weren't utilizing. And the reason the county bought it was for boater access. So, that is part of the main function of that park. And our intention is to improve the boater access, improve the beach. And on a Saturday morning, it's pretty much a mess out there with all the boaters trying to get out. They line up really, really early in the morning and there's even been fistfights and trouble out there. So, we want to make the park work better, bring the new part that we bought into the plan, but keep it as much as possible in its natural state. So, there's more to be discussed on this in the future. I just wanted you to know that the county is not anticipating a 40,000 square foot anything. When I saw that plan, it took my breath away. That is not the intent of our improvements to the park and more to come later. That's enough.
Okay. Ms. Mariano or Mr. Bradford? Okay, thank you. Ms. Mariano?
Thank you, Seth. So, I asked Randy Shane from APS to come forward today to talk about the Bruce B. Downs project, how successful it was. Little Road's coming up as well, which starts this week, I believe. And on it was, I think, another opportunity to take advantage of a great asphalt base, sealing the joints up. And it's like 0.05% of what the total cost would be of the project, just like the Bruce B. Downs project would be. So, I'd like to see it done because I will tell you, that road, we did it four years ago as it was evaporating, disintegrating on this. And I think we got a video there, Sonya, that I sent over. That's the video of APS's machines. It'll show the joints going beside it. But the video part is what I wanted to show as far as, we had seen part of it before. This is just how Little Road looks as you're driving along. And you'll notice the travel lanes. Anyway, so if you look at the travel lanes, what happens is it eliminates right there continually. Cars will have to move in and out, et cetera. So, I want to look at the long-term fix. I think if we spend the extra money to do it with the APS, it'll serve us for a long longer. And recently, I think with all the infrastructure making improvements, it's another miniscule investment that gives us a higher quality product. I'm looking for the dollar amount, was it 19,000?
Was, is this material that you put in with the pavement we're doing?
Well, it's really the machine that does it. And then what happens is the, you'll tack machines, well, you spray the tack down the truck, then comes over with the asphalt, drives over the tack and puts the asphalt down. Sometimes it takes a little bit of delay, like when we did 41, some of those sections, you put the tack down, but it rained, so they didn't even do the tack till the next day, had to re-tack again.
Right.
This situation here is you're putting the tack down and the asphalt's coming right over the top of it. And then when you take a multi-
It happens right away in this machine.
Happens immediately.
Yeah.
Smooth it all down. It's really a fast process as well as.
Are we using this on Little Road? It's going to start pretty soon, do we know?
This is going to start this week. So, is it something that's coming right up? There's why I kind of got to bring it again. I asked staff, as we did Bruce B. Downs, to bring an agenda item back to where we could just redo the, maybe the bid and just let them just go do it if they want to, if they want to do it. I think we should spend it on every road to improve it, but there's going to take a motion for that. The other number confirmed, was it?
Morning, Members of Board, this is Chair. I'm Jason Mickle, Public Works Director. To answer your question, Commissioner Mariano, the additional cost for the spray jet was estimated of no more than 19,000.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion, we use the APS technology for the 19,000 dollars.
Well, I mean, what do you guys want to do? We can't tell them how to do their work. Wait, I got lost here.
Is this the right thing to do? I mean.
I mean, should they bring us a proposal? I mean.
This is the proposal.
Well, I, no, I think, I think it looks fantastic and I want to, I want to, but I think there's a procedure.
Well, and like you said, the flow of the procedure is we put it in the bid specs to be put in there, but they didn't put it, we can execute it instantly.
Who's doing the job?
It'd be APS.
Who?
I don't know what we're voting on. And I think the attorney's about to speak here.
APS. Asphalt things is one of them.
So, if.
Oh, asphalt thing. Okay.
Okay, so if APS is doing the project and this is a means and methods that APS can use, I guess I'm, I too am a little confused as to why we need board action to do the work. We can't just authorize this and move or we need board action to expend an extra 19? There's nothing in the contract. Is that, is that the limitation here? I too am just trying to understand.
Take a look, take a look as we go.
Right, exactly. And in which case, we can approve a change order.
If I could, just like we did with the Bruce B. Downs several meetings ago, the action required is to allow for that line item that does not exist in the current bids right now to be approved to spend that additional up to 19,000 dollars for this particular item that is being singled out, that is not included. Right now, it's in the bids overall, but it's within, it's within the overall kind of assortment of items. It's not called out specifically.
So, the company that's won the bid, are they able to do this? So, so the company that's, that's won the bid, are they able to do this?
Mr. Chairman. Why don't we have the purchasing director address how the, how the bid?
Okay. Yeah.
Good morning, Carrie Roberts, purchasing director. This was a line item bid. The contract was awarded to this vendor as a line item bid, and this item was not one of those specific line items. We also did not allow for additional work outside of those line items within the bid itself.
Okay.
Well, I've never heard of line item bids.
So that's why, that's why we would, would need a motion to put this in. But as the company that won the bid, are they able to put this material in?
They do.
They are?
And, and again, Mr. Chairman, way, way back when we did the bids for this, we wanted to make that option. We didn't want to be locked in to have to do it every time.
Yeah.
But we wanted to put it in where we could do it. And I think we just need to somehow restructure the bid where staff can just do it on-
Definitely Little Road would be a good sample.
Well, and if you see, if you see the, if you, if you would run, keep running that video, you'll, you'll see exactly where this is such a critical thing. I mean, if you drive down Little Road to the south, you'll actually see the joint separating, but, you can play the video one more time? Okay. But literally, and this is like a classic case, it happened in the northern part of the road. I don't want to see it happen again too quickly.
Yeah.
And if you put this extra strength, better system down, it's, it's going to just give us a much longer life on it. As you saw, the tensile, the coefficient of strength is like double.
Do we have an anticipated extent, you know, life extension of the road with this problem? Like, we paid twenty thousand dollars for it, get their way to quantify, like how much it's been.
We're, we're going to find out, because we did Hudson Avenue this way, uh, Bruce B. Downs, so we'll get documentation. But again, just for the base start, it, it bonds much better and lasts much longer. And then we can see the joints just go and, go down fifty-four, go down Little Road, those joints, to me, is like such a huge thing, when you can connect them together with, with the same tack.
Mm-huh.
It'd be a test case. Okay.
Yeah.
So, uh-
So only remake the motion?
So, is the motion to add the work line item into it, and you'll negotiate price, like up to twenty thousand or?
No, up to nineteen thousand, I think.
Right.
It's, it's, and just so you know, the mo, the, the cost of it is already factored in to what it's going to be?
Yeah.
I had them calculated, and it was like up to nineteen thousand four hundred, was it?
So Commissioner Waven, um, it, on, on that particular item, um, the estimate was provided by the vendor and verified by staff about approximately what that cost would be. So that's why we estimated the vendor, confirmed by staff, the nineteen thousand dollars.
Okay. So I have a motion for that?
You have a motion to spend up to nineteen thousand five hundred dollars for the, uh, spray jet technology?
I'll second.
I thought you made it. Which one of you made the motion? Okay, because I was confused, Seth was making it while we got it. Okay, I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed five zero.
Chairman, if we also could make a motion to add this line item to the contract for the future, so that in, in the future, we don't have to come back and ask again if we would like to use the technology?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. My roll call vote.
District two Commissioner Waitman.
Aye.
District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford.
Aye.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed five zero. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I've got another item. Actually, two.
You got to hurry.
Okay. Um, on, on the barricades, uh, years ago, the county commission worked with TDC, TDC funded the barricades. You heard the story about how, how the situation is. Chasco Fiesta's coming up, and there was actually three bids that were done, they looked at it, and they can actually get them in time for the upcoming Chasco Fiesta Parade, um, which is only a couple of weeks away. And to make it happen, um, I need to make a motion for the Pasco County DOC C to donate TDC money of one third, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand thirty dollars to the Holiday Rotary, Rotary as a five oh one C three, with the stipulation, the funds be used to purchase the barricades, maybe utilized by the county and the other nonprofits.
So who would own-
Where's this money come from?
Uh, I suggest tourist development, just as we had done before.
Well, I'm not going to second. I'm not going to second that.
As I recall, what, what you did before was TDC bought the barricades, and then at some point, you transferred them to the Rotary, because we were having to ma, move them. We didn't move TDC funds directly into the not-for-profits accounts.
Right, and, and I got purchasing talked to it, why they need, why they suggested that we go this way.
Well, so I think, if, if I may, real quick, just-
Okay.
In terms of source of funding, I, I think you probably need to put that purview on administration to determine, yeah, this is, seems to me like as, as the statements even were made during public comment, legitimate public safety type expense. So whether it's tourism funds, whether it's public safety funds or general funds, I, I think you should leave that to me to, to make that call, if that's okay. Furthermore, I think that in order to expedite things, that the, the board, um, really give the funds directly to the Rotary of, of Holiday with, with the express stipulation that that's what they're going to purchase with them, uh, that certainly would streamline the procurement process. I'm looking at from my, I'm seeing head nods from Carrie, and, you know, obviously, you're going to cut that to a nonprofit is, with, with the stipulation, and I, I think we can ensure that. Uh, the, the county really, quite honestly, I have no desire to, to store or manage or maintain these barricades, so I presume that the city of Newport Ritchie or the Rotary would, would manage that for now and into the future. But those would be my concerns over this, provided that, you know, whatever the board decides.
And I think that, I would want to give in the motion the flexibility for you to kind of make that arrangement happen, so we get the security that they stay for Pasco County's use as well.
Mr. Waitman?
Thank you, Chair. I'm not opposed. It's, it's probably time we get some more barricades, since our events are growing, more folks are coming in to town, or, you know, more people moving here. But I think these barricades need to be a county of an asset, whether Parks manages them or something. We're going to take funds to buy them, which I think are necessary, but I think the county needs to maintain ownership. And if a club needs them for something, we create a process for them to use however many, many they need, because it should be a universal, as events grow, that way we just don't buy them for one select group. I think these need to be an all-free county-wide asset for any kind of big public, you know, festival or what have.
And then the city of Newport Ritchie was willing to work with us to store them as well. So I think, I, I, like I said, I'd give the county administrator the chance to work out the details. It just happens to be because of this parade's coming up, and you heard all the work it's going to take to get all those barricades, all those business people going to drive down, come back up, et cetera. If they just get delivered here, now it's just a matter of our, our own goodies from, from the jail out there, putting them all up. It'll save a lot of time grief and just prevent any accidents from happening by having these barricades in place.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I, I'm more in agreement with that than, I don't even think that is a correct process for us to just sit here and spend TDC money. I mean, they have a board and they have a process, and so for us to just step in and spend their money with, so, um, if you think you have the money, um, then I would agree with Waitman that, um, you know, public safety at some of these events is, is important. Um, another idea too is, and I don't know how quickly you can buy barricades, I have no idea, but can we lend resources to go down to Tampa and pick some up? I kind of like the idea of sharing with the different communities, because, uh, you know, how often are they really used? But in the short term, is that an option? But I would be in support of, of purchasing them if everyone thinks they're really needed.
It seems, it seems like the cities control those things. They, they have blockades in all, every city. Dade City has them, and Zepher Hills has them, so I would assume Newport Ritchie has them to a point, or Port Ritzie. But I think it'd be best to let the administrator look into this, and if you have to, just call, if it comes out of a different plan and doesn't look like it should go that way, then we need to know how it should go. It's fair to everybody, not just buy for one, one group and go forward.
Yeah.
And Mr. Chairman, in years past, it was designed where, like I said, it was, it was, it was used for TDC funds years ago. Whether it's used for that fund, I'm, I'm not biased to one, one or the other, but-
Right.
You know, that was just the venue we'd done before, so I was comfortable with it. I can put the flexibility in that motion, uh, up to the administrator, how decide how he wants to pay for it. But the timing of it was critical, and that's why I had to bring it quick without going to TDC.
So they don't have any now? Is that the problem?
They don't have enough now, they have about half what they need.
Yeah.
And if they have to borrow them, they got to drive all the way to Tampa, and you heard all the business people, they got to go make that move, because we can't go do that. Uh, this way here, we just streamline everything, and then we can work out the arrangements like we did years past.
They didn't know it till now?
What's that?
They wouldn't have known this when they finished last year?
Uh, I, I had brought it up a few months back. Nothing happened with it, so it just kind of come up again to say, let, let's go see if we can find it. They went out and actually looked and got some, some vendors, they got three bids, checked them, all out funded, what the, the availability was, and they just got that back to me like two days ago.
I, I think, uh, too, if I had a conversation-
It's a little quick decision for it.
I, I had a conversation with Michael Cox, um, and I think that they used to also get some from Dun, the city of Dunedin, but they won't share theirs. I think that's what he said, they're, they're not, they must be using them or something. So, um, again, my, I think the two options are, we help provide resources to go down and get the ones from Tampa if they're willing to share, or, um, or we figure out a way to help pay for them. But it seems like maybe the city should pitch in something, because the parades are in the city, not the county. But, um, but still, uh, I think it's a good thing that our parades are growing, um, in popularity, and we don't want to have, you know, the child run over by a float. Um, and so if we save one life, you know, with more barriers, it's, it's a good thing, so.
So make a motion to buy the barricades for the amount of money up to one hundred and thirty-nine thousand thirty dollars, give the administrator the flexibility to set up the terms of the purchase, as well as storage and control of it.
You mean, it remain a county asset?
And now, if I can clarify, well, I don't, I'll let you decide if there's a second or not, but, um, just to clarify, uh, I think the city of Newport Ritchie was willing to store them, so if the county has access to them, is that okay versus the county storing them? Or is your intent, Commissioner, to have the county maintain possession at all times of these assets?
I, I don't, I don't have a preference of where they're stored.
Okay.
It's a county of asset.
Yes.
Therefore, county should be able to have, you're the ruler of those.
Correct.
You're in charge of those, but in good spirit of who uses the barricades and stores them wherever.
Okay. And does the board have a problem with us, um, you know, if we're going to streamline this and make this quick, to essentially cut a check to the five oh one C three, the Rotary of, of Holiday, in order to expedite the purchase? That's, if, if we purchase them, then?
I would object to that.
You would? Okay.
I would, I would too.
Okay.
It just doesn't seem the right way to do it. You're, you're doing it rushed, I wouldn't, I mean, somebody had to know this way before now, we should have known it before now, so we don't have to rush in such a decision to spend citizens' money for one community over others, so.
That's, that's-
I mean, that's a-
In, in years past, those barricades were gone to both sides of the county. Dade Cities, Zepher Hills could get to use them as well and store it, and some of them still were there from the initial purchase, so.
If you will-
If anybody needs them, they, they should have access to them.
If you will, look into this and then see which way we need to go.
And I, I think the motion was, was, I think it was clear, up to one hundred and thirty-nine three hundred or thirty, you had the number. Flexibility to determine the, the funding source, and then, of course, we'll, we'll take the most expedient procurement path that is within board, board rules, so.
My problem is, is the fact that we got one hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars laying around to buy these, these things. It concerns me that we automatically, real quickly, go do something like that without some more thought in it.
So let me, let me ask a question. Is, um, it's public safety, is that part of penny for Pasco?
Um, I, again, I'm, I'm thinking through a number of, of, of options on that, so I wouldn't be, my, my head has gone there, yes, ma'am. I, I'm not saying that that's, we, I have to vet that, but-
Okay, let me, let me ask Commissioner Mariano a question. Um, what, do you know what the turnaround time was to get them delivered?
They can get these to the eighteenth, the parade, I think is the twenty-third, so-
It's pretty tight.
It's a super tight, that's why we had to come, had to bring it today.
Okay, well, I, I'm sure that you guys can figure out cobbling sources and frank, and again, I would make a call to the cities. I mean, we're getting hit with this at the last minute too, but it seems like the parades are in the cities, so maybe they can participate in some way in the cost, that's what we're saying.
So is that a second?
No, I'll, I'll let Waven second it. I'm not crazy about it.
Oh, actually, if I could, if I could add one more, and I, I don't know, you know, Jeff and I haven't had time to, to really, you know, coordinate on this, but, I mean, one, one option is if you could allow me to sole source it, that, that would certainly expedite the, uh, the procurement process.
I'll add that to the motion.
Well, if it's a sole source, it's a sole source. That's a decision your purchasing director needs to make.
Okay.
I don't know, I would think that barricades are available from more than one source, but that would be a procurement question.
Okay.
I don't know, I got it, I think so.
I just have an issue with this, so.
Well, for the sake of public safety, and I feel like this is an asset that the county needs and will use for, I mean, what's the life on these things? Ten years or more?
I bet so.
Could be twenty.
Yeah, well, we, I think we'll use these more regularly. Um, it's a bit of a fire drill, but I'll, I'll trust the county administrator, I'll second the motion.
District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye.
Just one other-
Rush pass five zero.
Thank you. Uh, one other item, Mr. Chairman, I know you're going to cover, but I'm just going to-
I got the groups standing there.
Okay. Go ahead. Let's go.
We'll do them. Uh, forty.
Actually, that one was a eleven fifty time certain.
Park forty-six.
There's another, I'm eleven thirty, and, no, this is it, right here.
It's up with that clock right now.
This is Tico.
We're going to number two, our chairman.
All right. I think this is yours.
You might want to hide the check, so everybody can, come up.
Going to barricades.
And just make sure you fold the check down, so they don't look at it.
So I, I just found out, Commissioners, Andy Taylor, Regional Affairs Manager, Tampa Electric Company, I just found out walking in, the Parks staff does not know the amount they're about to get.
Oh.
So this is going to get real fun, real fast. Um, and I was told the amount. So, good morning, Chairman Commissioners, thank you so much for having us here today, and the administration team for working with me. So we've got a very special presentation today. Uh, I'm here with the Tico family barbecue cook-off for charity. It's a separate five oh one C three entity. They've done this for thirteen years for charities. Commissioner Waitman, I believe you, uh, had attended in the past with one of your past jobs with Speaker Weatherford, you mentioned. And we've got your pair program from Parks and Rec. mentioned. And we've got your pair program from Parks and Rec. So you'll see photos from the February event scrolling on your screen. Katie from Commissioner Starkey's office attended with her family as well, which was wonderful to see her there. So I know Parks and Recreation Opportunities for People with Disabilities is a priority of yours, and it's a priority of mine. In 2019, then Commissioner Moore, and his trusted and beloved legislative aide, brought you...
Would that be Sheriff Taylor?
Brought you donations from community organizations, so we could match and create the first inclusive playground at Westway Chapel District Park, not something a county can normally do with the specialized equipment. Most of you were at that groundbreaking and that ribbon cutting, and it was a very special day. Since then, this current board, I know you've voted on CBPG funds and equipment purchases on your consent agenda to create those inclusive playgrounds at other parks throughout the county. It's a priority of yours. In May of this year, Florida Sports Coast is going to host the National Wheelchair Rugby Championships at the Wiregrass Ranch Sports Campus of Pasco County. And I'm proud that I had a hand in introducing them to the, to their partners for that bid. That was a competitive national bid they won. So this is a priority of yours, it's a priority of mine. So when I saw what was happening with the TECO Family Barbecue, that one of the beneficiaries was the pair program, I had to jump in. Some of these folks, as you know, I'm still pretty new in my role. They didn't know me, but I was the crazy guy saying, we got to come here today and do this. So thank you all for joining me. So with that, to make the actual presentation and tell you a little more about the event, I'm going to turn it over to Sam Nowakowski. He's the president of the TECO Family Cook-Off Charity. Thank you.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair. My name is Sam Nowakowski. I've been the chair, been a employee at Tampa Electric 41 years. I'm going to retire this year. But this committee behind me, there's others that are involved with it. This has been going on 13 years. And it started out, basically, it started out in the line department against a couple guys, crews, want to compete with barbecue. And that's how it started out. And now we're 13 years into it, and we've grown it every year. And this year was the biggest year ever we've had. It involves, these are Tampa Electric employees. We have the backing of Tampa Electric Company, but our company really pitches the point to us to go out and serve our community. And we've always served the Hillsborough County, right, because that's the majority of our people in Hillsborough County. But we do service Pasco County, okay? And we service Polk County. And every year, we get together, we take in applications, the committee reviews them, we do online interviews. We want to make sure the money we raise goes to the charity. We don't have all these fees involved. We want to help the community. And this year, we chose Pair as one of the charities we raise money for. We had, like you say, a record crowd this year. We have all the support from Tampa Electric Company, but it's the Tampa Electric employees that do all this. We don't get really much assistance from our company. We do it upon ourselves to raise money for the community, just in our blood. I think everyone here, it's in our blood to help the community. And we're ready to go next year, and we're going to figure out that we're going to help next year. Can't wait. So I'd like to go ahead, and I don't know, Natalie, or you want to... So come on up. Come on up.
So what's it going towards?
So...
Did they say this?
Yeah, this way. And the pair program, come on up, too, so if they don't know yet. Come on up, guys.
That's awesome.
I didn't... Yes, the amount... We took a, we raised an amount of $54,000. And we, like you said, we had two charities. We thought they were both very important to our community, so we just split it down $27,000 for Pair.
So I'm just going to say thank you for everyone that's involved in this. I'm not even really going to speak, because quite honestly, the team that puts this stuff together is right here. Very, very inspiring group. This money is going to, you know, is going to go right back to this program, so it's going to expand their potential to do these time, deliver these type of services, which is just amazing. So Kim, would you just take a second to just describe the program to the board?
Yeah.
So Recreation Equity is what we focus on with this pair program. Passco Adaptive Inclusive Recreation. So getting underestimated populations involved in our park system. That's our platform, and this money... So thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ms. Kim, can you give your name for the record?
Kimberly Miller.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Do a photo? You want to stand?
We'll come down for a photo, but meantime...
Maybe we should stand here.
Yeah, we'll stand here, because you got a lot, so y'all just line up in front of us. Or I'll come down in front.
Chairman, other than the photo.
But I would like to thank you for doing this, and I know Parks thanks you. It's going to really help a lot of people, so.
Mike Moore, Legislative Hader, Andy Taylor. I'm waiting for a buddy. There we go. There was a smile. 1, 2, 3, 8. Keep looking. There we go. Okay, folks, right here. And then right here. Looks great. Thank you all.
Yeah, that's awesome. Wonderful. That's a lot of barbecue.
If you didn't notice, one of the photographers looked very familiar, and I noticed he came in early this morning. I thought he'd got misdirection and got here, but the fact of it is, he was there. That's Barney, because Andy Taylor, Sheriff Taylor. And Barney was here taking pictures, just so you know.
Chairman, I have a question.
Okay.
So I am unaware if Pair is an organization in a county. Do we need to accept the check?
Do what now?
To accept the check?
The check would be the check.
The real check?
Would be to the Board of County Commissioners.
Is it to the Board of County?
Designated to the Parks Board.
How's that normally go?
And he's got, Keith has it in his back pocket.
Yeah, let's officially accept it.
Okay.
So motion by Commissioner Mariano, second by Commissioner Waitman, okay?
Okay. By roll call vote.
All right. District two Commissioner Waitman. District three Commissioner Starkey.
Aye.
District four Commissioner Bradford. District five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District one Chairman Oakley.
Aye. Motion passed 5-0.
Mr. Wiley, if you will hand the check to board records, we will bring it in for you.
Yeah, don't let him get out of here with that.
We thought he was just going to deposit it into the petty cash pot, you know?
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a time certain R46. Or is that it?
We did that one.
What is, did we do R45?
Yes, sir.
All of them are done?
Yeah.
Man, we skipped over them here and there and everywhere. Jack, you have one more item?
Just one more picture, and I know you're going to cover it, so that's just a... I was at the Founder's Day Parade. It was a great, great event. Commissioner Oakley was leading the way right in front of me, so great day.
Yeah, it was a good day, but...
That's all I have, so.
That's all you have?
Well, I forgot some, I forgot two things, but right now, I can only remember one of them.
Well, since you forgot one of them and have one, we'll let you do the one, and then we'll adjourn for lunch.
Marcy let me know that she's a volunteer at the Anclaw Lighthouse. She got engaged at the top, and then I had the weekend wrong. It's the second weekend of the month, not the first weekend that it's open to the public. Oh, okay, I remember what the other one was. If you remember, a number of years ago, I was able to get like $3 million from the legislature to sleeve the pipes in Gulf Harbors. They put all this liner in all the, I guess it's sewer pipes. And what was happening was there was so much saltwater intrusion in there, it was swamping the wastewater treatment facility that we shared with Newport Ritchie, and it was really causing them problems. And so they finished, they finished it all sometime in the last year. Well, I was at a meeting Friday night on the Gulf Harbors Park, and the residents told me that the water quality is so much improved in the channels from that project. So I wanted to share that with our utilities department and all of you. And I'm going to call Chris Brows, who's the one who, you know, sent that money our way, that made such a difference. And I noticed that yesterday, when we were going on our, Saturday, when we were pulling away from the dock on our house in Gulf Harbors, that I could see like three or four feet down from my dock poles, which I've never been able to do that before. So what a difference.
Very clear.
Just cleaning, sleeving those pipes. What a difference that made.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Great news.
All right, we're going to adjourn until 1:30, when we come back from public hearing.